Good evening, everyone. Welcome to March 8th, our regular school board meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, well, good evening. I'm going to, to my friends on Zoom, Ms. Luke is in the waiting room. Dr. Felton, if you could assist with that, would be great. Before we look for approval of the minutes, which actually there were no minutes to approve, we've approved, we're up to date on our minutes. Are there any changes to the agenda? I do want to mention the addition of an HR addendum. It was added to Board Docs today as item 9.01, and you all have a copy of that. And then we're moving right on to representation. We have lots of friends on Zoom today, great to, or tonight, good to see you all. And to introduce them is Sheri Owens.
Good evening, Board Member Superintendent. At the last meeting, you might recall, Mr. Dodd congratulated the Knights of Aeronautics from East Ridge High School on the Real World Design State Championship that they recently won for their engineering project, which was designing an aircraft system that can deliver packages. It's pretty amazing. And Channel 6 did a story highlighting their success. So we want to share that video with you tonight, and then you'll have a chance to meet the team virtually and offer your well wishes to them as they prepare to move on to the next level of competition, which will be the world championship that's going to be held next month. So let's take a look at the video, and then you can meet the team.
The school aeronautics team from Lake County just won a pretty big honor. The Knights of Aeronautics, which I love that name, from East Ridge High School are state champs in the Real World Design Challenge.
Yeah, News 6 anchor Julie Rotten tells us about their winning design and their quest to become world champions and tonight getting results in our schools.
It's like a real business, a real engineering task. And the kids are put in the grinders to find out what's going on, and it's a process. And then the kids learn from it, and of course, the teacher learns from it at the same time.
We last visited John Rollerson two years ago at Leesburg High School. Now his engineering team at East Ridge High School just won the state championship in the Real World Design Challenge. The challenge this year was design an aircraft package delivery system.
And it allows them to put again, put together real proposals and to actuate real answers.
I act as a liaison between our mentors and our team, asking them any questions and getting their advice to the team. We also had a separate design. It was a separate system that autonomously loads the packages into our aircraft before they take off.
Next up, the world championship in April.
You have to sit there, and you have to persevere, and you have to just hang in there. I am very confident we're going to do very well in this world championship.
I'm excited for our whole state of Florida and all of our friends and family to see how hard we've been working for the past year, and hopefully it'll all pay off. Never give up, like, always go for your dreams, always go big.
So, welcome, Mr. Rollerson, to you and your team. You have just done an outstanding job, and I'm going to turn it over to you and let you introduce your team to us tonight.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, because I am going to turn it over to my project manager to do that, and Lisa's going to go ahead and introduce everybody, and what do you do? Oh, I came here. Okay, go.
Hi, my name is Lisa Gagliano, and I'm the project manager for the Knights of Aeronautics. I'm not sure who is with us. I think I saw Mariah, Mariah Langford, she's our pilot. Zachary Zuniga is our aircraft engineer. Adam Reimer is our ground systems operator. And is it, anybody, is Amir here?
I didn't see him. Well, you know, unless he's off to the side somewhere.
Okay, I think that's it then. That's all of us. No.
Okay, that's here, but Amir, he'd be the aircraft person, and Isabel, she's going to be.
Isabel and Ciar are the marketing specialists.
And it's, you know, it's a good, it's a seven-team project, and we got a strong team, man. I am confident that we are going to do very well. We still have a lot of work to do. We got three patents that we are trying to protect, and I got some super students, so they're really good, and they're really dedicated, and they're hungry. So it wouldn't surprise me if we won it all. So, yes, I'm happy.
Well done.
We just want to wish you the best of luck. I know you guys are going to represent Lake County and East Ridge High School beautifully as you move forward. And also on Zoom with us is your very proud principal, Julie Llewellyn, and your assistant principal, Mr. Balkaran, so I don't know if they have anything they want to add. Otherwise, we're going to wish you all well, and we can't wait to learn more and see how well you do it with the world champions.
And also, I'd like to go ahead and, and, yeah, so some consideration are for our principal, who's been very, very supportive. She allowed us to do this, and she needs to get some, some credit.
We'll give her a little bit. All the best to all of you. Good luck, guys.
Congratulations and good luck.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Dad.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving now into public input. Mr. Yocum, if you could please come to the podium, your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Man, very impressive. Congratulations to the students. Yep, I'm here speaking as your Chair of the Internal Audit Committee. I wanted to give you an update. We had a recent meeting, and look at, he's getting the timer already, because he said I could have only 15 minutes. I'm sure he said that. It, first of all, I just wanted to recognize you did spend time last week talking about the maintenance audit, and it didn't mention that here, because it was on the consent agenda, but I just would like to recognize the fact that under Tom Mock and all the staff that worked with him, including Scott and others, that they saved, they estimate $1.3 million. And I would like to point out, as a longtime observer of these things, that sometimes there's pressure to not hire or to compensate administrative personnel or to reduce staff. And, but in this case, you can see when you have somebody that is trained, and they find things, and they work together, you can save a lot more than maybe what the individual salary is. And I would say that, as my experience as an internal audit manager, I always save more than the cost of our department every single year I worked in it. The, there's, there's also a construction contract review, but I've told that that's coming to the board later, so I won't talk about that. The, we did change some commission policies in committee. One is that we're going to meet quarterly, and the meetings are going to be for two hours. We hope that everybody can attend those full two hours. And so it went pretty well last time, and now we have another appointee, and so as a consequence, we've got, we'll have a full, fully-staffed committee this next meeting. And we did set, we did agree, and we set the meetings at the time of one meeting, we set the next meeting, so everybody could pull up their calendar and agree, so that will help improve the throughput. And finally, just to mention that coming down the pike, I'm hoping to get the Audit Committee and the Audit Department to develop a full risk audit database, like I've seen at many other organizations, including Lake County. And that's to develop all the different entities that could be subject to risk and come up with a ranking system that shows that. So, and the purpose of that is, then if we bring that to you, you can look at that, you can say, well, we've never audited that, and you'll see maybe that you need to have some more help in the department, because I really think you're, you could achieve some more savings if you did do that. And so that's it. Thank you very much.
Vance, could I just briefly, he does a risk assessment every year. Is this, is what you're proposing, something?
A full risk audit assessment. He, he does, partially, get ideas from the staff, they get ideas from the board and the committee, but a full one is you, it's a database of identifying all of, in all the, say, individual departments, and you categorize it. It could be up to 10 different risk categories, everything from the education experience of the manager to other things. And then you develop a ranking system, and you come up with your list of priorities. And then, of course, you guys look at that, say, from some other perspective, political risk or something like that, this one should have been moved up higher, and that's what you do. And then you come up with, and you may have 30 projects up there, and you don't want to give up any of them. And that's the whole issue, is to give you the choice of what is really, maybe what should be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vance. We have online, Mrs. Felton?
I do, I have, I have two public input. I have, I'm going to let Mr. Deason in.
Mr. De?
Greg Deason.
Okay, Mr. Deason, if you'll please state your name and address, and you'll have You're muted, Mr. Deason. Mr. Deason, you're muted. You are still muted.
Press the microphone button.
Press the microphone button in the lower left-hand corner.
There we go.
Thank you for your patience. Can you hear me now?
Yes. If you'll give your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Greg Deason. I'm at 2436 Riviera Lane in Mineola, and I wanted to thank you for taking my questions today. My first question is, since Governor Ron DeSantis has authorized.
The microphone button in the lower left-hand corner.
You're hearing feedback. You're hearing feedback. Don't watch the YouTube. It's on a delay. So turn off your YouTube, or it's going to keep reverberating.
This is not going very well.
Are you ready to go? Mr. Deason, now we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Number one, since Governor Ron DeSantis has authorized the replacement of Common Core, will you be using a existing curriculum or creating a new one? And if so, which curriculum will you be using, and when will it be ready?
Normally, we don't take questions. It's normally comments, but the superintendent, I think, can respond.
Yeah, we're happy to answer your questions, and we're also happy to contact you directly and engage in a much longer conversation if need be, so that you're not limited to your three minutes. If you'd like to give us your contact information, we are happy to give you a call. To answer your question, we follow the Florida standards. The Florida standards were adopted several years ago, and we actually have new standards that the Richard Corcoran as Commissioner and the Governor DeSantis authorized. And two years ago now, that these were under development, and we'll be rolling out this year, the K-2 standards for English Language Arts, and they will gradually be rolling out from there, but that's where we will be starting for next year. We're currently under a new curriculum adoption. Those will be up for public input, following board policy in the next, after our meeting on March the 22nd, where we will look at the different options that teachers have to select for the ELA curriculum. So, and Dr. Felton, if there's anything more to that, feel free to add. Otherwise, Mr. Deason, we're happy to give you a call and talk more specifically about any curriculum questions or concerns that you may have.
That's fantastic. May I ask one last question?
Sure.
Okay. I'm concerned about the pressure that's putting on the children with our sheep, shepherd, wolf drills, and when the faculty and law enforcement officers should be responsible for spotting red flags and keeping our kids safe. Can you talk about that for a little bit?
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of what you're referring to.
In the elementary schools here locally, they practice the sheep, shepherd, wolf drills in the classrooms.
Our safety and security.
And I just was concerned why that burden is put on the kids, as more of maybe it's should be put on the faculty and law enforcement officers to be responsible for spotting any red flags and keeping the kids safe.
So, so we are required by Florida State statute, if you refer to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act, to provide training for students on what to do in the event of an active shooter. And so it's called Run, Hide, Fight, and it's a proven curriculum that, or protocols that are supported by our local sheriff, as well as across the country. And there are specific protocols that we, are age-appropriate. It is modified based on the, the age of the students and the grade level, in terms of how this is rolled out. And again, we're happy to engage in any discussion about that, that you would be interested in engaging in. But those are, those are all required, that we provide those training in state statute.
Okay, thank you for your feedback.
Mr. Deason, if you would send an email to my email address, which is mathiasv@lake.k12.fl.us, I'll make sure with your contact information, then we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Dr. Felton, we have someone else?
I do, I have Mr. Sardar. I'm going to admit him now.
Perfect.
Oh, it's the state Capitol.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Sardar.
David Sardar, right here in the state Capitol.
Yeah, welcome. If you'll, if you'll give us your name and address, and then, as you know, you have three minutes, and your time started two minutes ago.
66 Winter Green Drive, Blue Park, Florida, 34731. I don't know, are you able to view me?
No, sir.
Because I am standing on the steps of the state Capitol, across the street from the Supreme Court of Florida.
It does say that.
There's the Capitol right there, if you can see it.
No, we can't. We only see state Capitol.
You know, which is computer systems. I was just in a meeting down at the Civic Center, because our computers don't work right. Somebody's running our computers somewhere, and some worth than $30 million, possibly, was it a year I heard, or since 2015, on a computer system that doesn't work. And now, who knows? You know, Tallahassee, I've been here since every interim committee meeting, January 11th, 13th, run into, well, substitute speaker, Chris Rawls, a lawyer, who's Amanda Boggs, a defense lawyer, the mayor of Taveras, Taveras. And, well, I am trying to make a difference. I am trying to get my job back. I need a job. And, well, you may not like me, but they doing the state Capitol, apparently, and you can't make everybody happy. But the kids need to listen to their mom and dad, because they could be going right over there to the laws of the Florida State University and being the next, well, Supreme Court Justice. You know, I'm worried about our kids' future. I've been all over the state. I've been, well, the last time I saw you folks, I had just come back from Orlando after being in Leeburg, Michigan, and I did the South River County the same day. And with that, the next day, I did Orange County, Lake County virtually, because of COVID, both at 9:00, 7:00, and 9:30, and went to Clearmont, and was with Todd Park, the jerk in Lake County with the new Alan Rosen. You know, you can't make everybody happy, but I know cleaning, I know only trash litters, I know our earth's in trouble, I know kids are, some kids are scared, like missile paths. You know, you got to listen to the leaders that know what's good things done, you got to listen to Walt Tallahassee, you can't believe what meetings I've been into. I've been into children, family, and senior subcommittee, justice appropriations subcommittee, pandemics, and public emergency committee. That's the one where a guy is sitting like a kindergarten, lying to people. You can't lie. You know, when systems don't work. Because I was just in a healthcare appropriations subcommittee, a joint select committee, I collected bargaining professions and public health subcommittee. You know, my son's a male nurse, he's a pick lines. He, he was a Melvin Gordon of his high school. Kids can go to school with fooling around, thinking they got to lump anybody else.
Mr. Sardar, you reached your three minutes, sir.
And be on a path.
Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Right there, Leesburg, high school.
Have a great night.
I do, there.
Thank you.
And no reason I can't have my job.
You've reached your three minutes.
Because I'm a great greener, and I do care, and I told them when I got there.
Mr. Sardar, you've reached your three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Take care. Mrs. Cullen Bat, you're muted.
I think she's trying.
Well, you can't just look at it. Hit a button.
Mr. Mathias, you're in rare form tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mathias, you're the school board and superintendent. The foundation has had 733 teacher visits, and we've distributed over $55,000 worth of supplies. We also distributed over 11,000 Disney T-shirts with an estimated value of over $400,000, and every school in our district receives some. We're in the process of distributing over 20,000 bottles of hand sanitizer, which were donated by Advent Health. We are starting to get a lot of masks requests again, and so we've reached out to the Lake County Quilters Club, or the Guild, and the Ironman Foundation, and they have both agreed to send us masks, and we'll be distributing those through the Apple Mark stores. Our scholarship platform deadlines for graduating seniors this Friday, and we please ask you to encourage any students or parents that you know to visit the foundation site, because we have over $100,000 worth of scholarships available for this graduating class. We awarded the second round of state matching grants to 19 schools. The majority of it was for literacy this time, but there were also a few STEMS and a few CTEs, and the total amount was over $13,000. Mascot Charter received the funding from the Festival of Trees, and the foundation matched the $1,000 from the Festival of Trees, and that money is going to be used for a literacy art project, and it will impact over 700 students. The rookie and school-related celebration will be held this Wednesday evening. Again, we have redefined an event, and the nominees will be in the room live, and then the event will be livestreamed for the school families, the friends, and the nominees families. And we want to thank Insight Credit Union for sponsoring that event. We've identified the top 3% of our 2021 graduating class, there's 88 of them, and since we cannot have our annual luncheon, which typically draws about 300 people, Style Magazine has graciously agreed to donate two pages in their May issue, and we'll be recognizing the students in print, and then the foundation will be going school to school with a special surprise at all of our eight high schools. Also in May, Style Magazine is going to be featuring 288 of our senior graduating class members, and all they have to do is submit their photo and their school name to Acres Media. And Sheri got that information out for us today, and if you see it on your Facebook feed, please share that. And the foundation board has voted that Collier Financial and Mount Dora, Greg Collier, to be the 2021 business partner for the district and the foundation. This small office, there's only, think about four or five people in there, have years and years of history with volunteering and funding and just finding initiatives for our teachers and students that they can help with. So we're, we're very proud of Collier Financial. They'll be recognized by the Commissioner of Education, and they will compete on a statewide level. We received $10,000 from Karen Bent through the Ruth and Roy Shaw trust for take stock and children's scholarships, and the Advisory Council and the foundation board has selected the 38 students that will receive scholarships from the class of 2024, and their contracts will be signed in May. Ladies for Education is coming back, and it'll be really the first event that the foundation has done since March of last year, and it's scheduled at Continental Country Club for Friday, May 14. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, March 24, and we have a strategic planning workshop where we're bringing in more consulting, who came in about three years ago to help us with our strategic plan, and that is a four-hour meeting scheduled for April the 28th. Are there any questions?
No, amazing work. Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
Anyone? Okay. Board of the committee report?
I have no report.
Perfect. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.04.
No motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five of them.
Okay, and that's, I'll turn it over to our attorney for the discussion on item 11.01.
The item before the board is the tentative approval of policy PO 3124, drug-free workplace. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? If so, please come forward to the podium at this time. Dr. Felton, there is anyone on Zoom wishing to speak to this item?
No, no one at this time.
Seeing no one, I believe it's appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent, you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of item 11.01, tentative approval of policy PO 3124, drug-free workplace.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five of them.
Okay, and that's, I'll turn it over to our attorney for the discussion on item 11.01.
The item before the board is the tentative approval of policy PO 3124, drug-free workplace.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a. Superintendent's report?
I just want to give a big shout out and thanks to our health department and all the volunteers who came out last week. We don't have the final number of all of the employees, 50 and over, that were able to, or took advantage of the vaccinations. But since the governor's new executive order, we were able to begin that. He announced that on Monday. We had him up and running on Wednesday. And we're able to get the vaccinations done Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I would, I'm going to say we probably did about 50% of those employees that were eligible. The governor has announced that he will soon be opening that up for all of our employees. And as soon as that happens, we'll move quickly with the health department to get those scheduled as well. And we're looking at scheduling round two for the folks who just got theirs last week. At the end of the month, the 1st of April, we have a planning day coming up on April 2nd. So we're going to shoot for that as one of our potential dates that we're going to tentatively set aside in hopes that if the governor has signed the new executive order that will allow us to do all of them, we'll have some coming in for the first dose and finish up the second doses for this last group then. And we'll be communicating all of that to our employees. Also, just want to remind you that we are on spring break next week. And then Carmen just mentioned about Ricky Teacher of the Year and our school-related Employee of the Year event this week, so I won't mention that. I have a few letters of condolence that were sent. First of all, condolences went to the family of Fred Colbert. He's a retired assistant superintendent for school administration with the district. Also, Teresa Stewart, she's a lead driver in our transportation department, lost her husband, Horace Stewart. Lauren DeRitter, who is our supervisor of risk management, lost her husband, Craig DeRitter. And Lou Torres, who's a bus assistant, lost her son, Renee Santana. So condolences to those families.
More comments? We'll start with you, Mrs. Luke.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Dove?
Yes, well, I will just be the first to say this, that I'm hoping that this year's spring break is shorter than last year's. Also, just hearing from Vance tonight and thinking about the audit committee and all the work that we've seen over the years, and certainly the great return we've seen on our investment, I wonder if this year might be worthwhile to renew some of the conversation we've had just kind of sporadically over the years about looking at our audit department, identifying maybe a second auditor. I don't remember how long Mr. Mock said until retirement, but I think it's only a few years away, right? So I guess that would provide the benefit of succession, as well as, who knows what their sort of operational efficiencies will discover. You were just doubling the size of the department out to one person. So I guess that's probably something to talk about in the context of our bunch of discussions this year, but that's something I'd really like to explore and talk about more.
Very good. Ms. Cady?
Well, first of all, I'd like to offer my thanks to Lake Style Magazine for publishing our seniors and all the other things they do to help us. And the only other thing I have is that the Lake County Community Action Agency, one of our partners, has donated 1,000 masks. And I believe Mr. Carr has suggested that we utilize those by giving them to the bus drivers for students that are at the bus stops with no mask. And I have those in my car, so if you'll just let me know where to take them. That's it.
That's great. I was able to stop by the vaccination site, and I was really impressed with, like, it's all outside, it's drive-up. The nurses and staff that are there with the health department were so nice and friendly to everyone, really caring people. I was thinking perhaps, since we are having some vaccine resistance, maybe we could put out this week something about educating about vaccines, or these vaccines and the safety profile of them. I can help with that. Because I would like to get as many people who are willing to get vaccinated because it will help stabilize our schools. And the process is fabulous. Like, it was really wonderfully run and very well done. So just, let's just keep going, and the faster we can get vaccinated, the faster we get to normal. Hopefully, we like, the goal is actually to kind of vaccinate before these variants swoop in. So nobody really seems to know what's going on with those. But the more vaccination we could get, the more we'll have protection against that and not have to worry about it. So with all, with Godspeed, let's move forward. Very good. Next.
I just want to wish everyone a safe spring break, and we look forward to seeing you all back in a week. Hopefully, a week. All right, this meeting is adjourned.